Welcome everyone to the regular meeting, monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township of Springfield. Today's date is October 8, 2025. Meeting is being held in Springfield Township Building and is also being offered a live streaming feature. Meeting will also be made available on the township's website beginning tomorrow morning. Comments will not be accepted remotely during the meeting, but instructions for providing or submitting public comment in advance to tonight's meeting were provided as part of the posted agenda. Mr. Taylor, have we received any public comment prior to the meeting?
No public comments were received, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Now I would ask that you please stand and join the Board of Commissioners a moment of silent reflection. Out of the service, men and women who place themselves in harm's way, they're to help preserve our safety at home overseas. Please remain standing for a pleasure.
Let's put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I would entertain a, excuse me, entertain a motion dispensing with the reading in the minutes. The previous meeting is written and recorded in the official minute book of the township.
I'll make that motion.
The motion is your second.
Second.
Questions or comments? Well, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay. Please record a six zero. We are just missing Commissioner Wilson this evening. Other than that, we have a full slate of the board and staff. We would like to announce that the Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session, part of its October 6, 2025 workshop meeting to discuss two litigation matters. Now we're on to public comment. Board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those issues listed on the agenda will have already taken place. Therefore, if you wish to comment on the agenda item, now would be the appropriate time. If you could just state your name and address for the record.
It's Kyle Roquette. I'm at 903 East Mermaid Lane, and I would like to talk a little bit about the parking on Mermaid Lane. You see that you're trying to take away the parking outside of the building? That is the new pickleball court that's supposed to open up? Is that going to be all the parking in front of the building?
Not entirely. It would be in between the two driveways and then for a distance on either side of the driveway.
That would be the entire. That would be the entire side of the building then, in between the two driveways, and then there's about six feet on each side, about a total of eighty feet.
So it would affect, I think, maximum four spots roughly?
Roughly four, from four, four or five. We already have a bit of a parking issue on this street already with people coming to the park, you know, and there's going to be people coming to the pickleball court. I don't know, is the parking being removed because of safety?
Yeah, there's a concern that there's going to be a sight obstruction that the cars present for voters as they exit that property.
Okay. And is there anything like that on the street for the other businesses?
Yeah, in fact, last month, the board removed the parking spot on Wilbur Avenue for our business there.
Okay, so that's Wilbur. So nothing else on Mermaid? So nothing else on Mermaid Lane then?
I don't know.
Okay, okay, I'm just, 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 just asking, because I mean, because I know that I, from living on the street, I know that it is, as we refer to it as a speedway, so I know that it can be hard for people to be pulling out. So I'm, and I'm concerned about everyone's safety, really. I have to see people at the park that are crossing the street to see that, go to the park and visit it, walk their dogs. And I see lots of incidents where we have speeding and people screaming at each other, trying to get across that crosswalk, so. I mean, I know that there's issues, and I know it's going to be hard to pull in and out of there. I understand. As a resident there, I also like to park my vehicle pretty much right outside my property. I like to be able to see my vehicle, the contractor. I keep tools on my truck. I like to have it in sight. If we remove these parking spots, it's going to be a ripple effect. Cars are going to be moved down. My car could now be at the agricultural building where I can't see it, where I have to walk further every time I want to get something in and out of my truck. I don't have the ability to park two vehicles in my driveway. A lot of my neighbors don't. I understand that there's, you know, that there's safety concerns, but I think the safety concerns the street. I would like to see the street become safer for everybody, not just the people that are going to a business. I would like to see maybe some speed bumps to slow the cars down. I don't know what it is about Springfield Township. I've only got about two hours to prepare for this meeting, so I apologize. Last week, there was four traffic citations issued, four. I see four speeders every twenty minutes on my street. I think something needs to be done about the street to make it safer for everybody. I don't know how we go about that. Traffic studies? I really don't know. That would be my concern. I think we should make it safer for everybody, not just a business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Shirk, I'm at 907 East Mermaid, so I'm directly across from the, the new business there, so. Understand the safety aspect and do echo a lot of what Kyle said there, but we've got a very short driveway, and while they've been doing the construction, I have felt the constraints of we can just barely fit two cars in our driveway with the tail of our second car into the sidewalk, so it affects others. And the same thing, it is that ripple effect, and most evenings, if I'm, I'm coming home, there's, there's not the extra spots that are available. There's really, mine is usually there and kind of everyone, then the apartments that are there and off the street kind of respect that, but by the evening, they're all there, so. Really, I'm looking for a solution of like, all right, if we can't park there, and we have these, you know, if you look on East Mermaid there, they're all short driveways like mine. Where do we park? What is, what is the solution is what I'm looking for.
Mike, so I think as pointed out, there's probably five spaces in between the two driveways. I know you said Officer Hart did a study. Do we need to get rid of all of those spaces?
It was his recommendation to remove them for motor vehicle safety, like coming in and out, to avoid a sight obstruction. I mean, we can ask him to take another look at it, see if it could be shortened up, but I think in between the two driveways, unless unless you make it an in and out situation, like one driveway in and one driveway out, if you can figure out a way to do that, I'm sorry?
Has that been considered?
I don't know that anybody's discussed it.
Was there a traffic study done then? I'm sorry, am I allowed in or out?
Well, technically you have to come up to the thing because the people at home can't hear you.
The question is, was there?
It's under recording.
The question was, was there a traffic?
Yes, so was there a traffic study done?
Traffic Safety Officer evaluated the parking situation to determine whether a sight obstruction would be created. There was not a detailed traffic study, meaning digging on.
Taking on consideration the road.
Take the traffic counts, no, no traffic counts or a speed study conducted.
And who was that done by?
The Traffic Safety Officer.
And what was his name?
That's Sergeant Hart.
Thank you.
So, so the idea about one way in and one way out, I hear you suggesting certainly.
That would have come up at the land development review process, and I don't know that anybody brought it up at that time as either a recommendation or an obligation or requirement.
Or, or a need, I mean, that needs servicing now, but just wasn't for the process then?
Yeah.
And what does the parking, I'm sorry, what does the parking look like? And forgetting, I just can't picture that right at that moment. How many spots after the?
I mean, there's, there's three in between the driveways. I think it might be four in between the driveways. And I want to look at here.
That's what I was going to clarify there, because they were saying five, so I wanted clarification if I could on what those five are. There are three that could fit in between, because I've had to do it for holidays. So one on either side then? Gotcha. So that's really where you have your truck. And then just beyond where Kyle typically has his truck would be, if there's an X spot there for, I guess, the, like they were cutting down branches this week for the municipal vehicles to get into the park. So just to clarify on that.
I think someone mentioned, what about if there's three spots in between the two driveways? You preserve the one spot, and so you still have a one-spot buffer either side of each driveway. I don't know if that makes sense, you know, for one spot. Does that cut down the same way? I don't know.
I mean, I'd have to ask the trucks.
But I don't want to speak for him, but it could be amenable to having a conversation.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, your last question, Kyle, you know, where do we park when there's less parking? I don't have a, I really don't have a direct answer for you. I acknowledge that, that, that area is already tight with parking, you know. You know, we, we field more inquiries and complaints, if you will, about parking and traffic than anything else, you know. So we do take that seriously. We do have our safety unit conduct traffic studies all the time. We do set up where there's a lot of complaints on speed studies and, and doing that. The four, you mentioned the four citations. That seems like, I know they're, they're categorized by the police department by the actual traffic safety unit, and then there's the actual patrols that also do enforcement. So the overall number could be higher than that. I know there's always, there's a few hundred violations of speeding, you know, each month. Now, they all don't get ticketed. If it's someone's first offense, a lot of times they'll give them a warning. But we do know, and we, we've talked to our department about enforcement, and they do a decent amount, even if it's not, even if it's not apparent.
And aside from the parking on the speeding issue, which to Jen's point comes up all the time, you should be aware, there's some radar limitations that are, the police department has to comply with by the state, and so that also isn't as a straightforward thing to do to create these, to catch all the speeders, if you will. It's a lot of work for them because of their limitations by, by not being allowed to be, to use radar guns, that's right.
Right, yeah. Local, local police in Pennsylvania are one of only two states that do not allow them to utilize radar for traffic enforcement. We have to use other timing devices, and those timing devices are not exact. So you need to provide a cushion or buffer above the posted speed limit before you can start issuing tickets for speeding.
The state police can use radar, but not, not local departments.
Just some context for you. I know that's not the main purpose of your conversation. It comes up a lot, something that's a concern we want to share. And I think it's come up at the state level a lot, but they just haven't been able to make inroads there. You can imagine a lot of the state is rural and are not keen on adding more speed, I guess, speed traps for lack of a better word. But to your parking situation on Mermaid, is there could we take another look and see if there's, if is that worth a shot? Is it, is it looking at doing a one-way and that would resolve slowing traffic? Sort of what I understood the suggestion potentially to be.
So it looks like in, in front of 903, so there's the corner house that fronts on Elm, correct? And then there's 903 right next to it, if I read that correctly, but that looks to be a two-car driveway. And then is 905 or 907 after that?
905, the carper's, and then we're, we're not.
So I'm not quite sure what the, the block, the box is for.
That's for, that's for the municipal guys to be able to get into the park.
Yeah. If they're only. I'm not sure how critical that is. I'll have to find out why exactly that's there. Never, never used to be there. And then there looks to be one spot immediately adjacent to one of the driveways. And then there's the area in between the two driveways, and then a small area. Well, there's parking permitted beyond that, but that gets you further away from your house, which is what your concern is. Right, but if the box should go away that's marked out in front of the park, which in this video or this street view rendering has a silver Volvo or a silver, silver Volvo parked in it, is that close enough to where your, your home is?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't we look at whether the box is necessary or not? I, I don't know how often we actually need to get access into the park with a vehicle. I mean, lawnmowers and stuff, sure, but I, I'm not, I don't know why they would need to have that. We have a driveway e-brim with a chain across it to get access in.
But it sounds like we can revisit it, though, and look at some, see big solutions.
We can preserve, at least remove the box.
Yeah.
That would help.
Yeah, and from our standpoint, you know, traffic safety offer makes a recommendation on safety. A lot of times we're, we're going to support that, you know. Safety is paramount. Obviously, there's within reason we can't like over-safety to everyone's detriment, but if there's a clear-cut sign of sight lines being an issue, we typically are going to follow their recommendations.
So is there a plan, maybe we'll hold off at this point in time, take another look at it and see what we can achieve?
Yeah, but it's, it's not reasonable. I mean, there's nothing, there's no urgent timeline other than this just came up as a request, if we look at it.
So. And just for the record, as the business owner, I have plenty of parking for my customers. I don't need parking on the street, and I don't, you know. If there's a safety concern, I understand that, but if you have parking in between, I'm happy with that. But I, I would defer to the police department.
Are there other tenants in the property? No, it's just the one tenant, okay. Okay.
Not yet. There's a phase two to the rear of the property that ultimately hit the belt, but that's a good distance back.
Will that have its own parking?
That will have its own parking.
Okay.
So potentially one preserve spot, potentially looking at an ingress, egress adjustment that.
Well, that's up to the lander. We can't mandate, mandate that. That's but that would potentially allow for one of the areas around that one driveway to be free of the parking. If we're going in, it's not that big of a deal. Coming out is where the, it's like distance would be.
All right, so it sounds like we have a consensus that we'll table and look at it more closely, try to, try to preserve more of the parking where we can. We can't, we're not going to promise that every spot stays. If there is an issue with safety, you know, we have to take that seriously, so.
We're very compelled to have this up the street. And I would say also, as, as a
We've long advocated for speed bumps in different areas. Round out more neighbors. Talk to your, your commissioner that represents your ward and try to get them on board. I mean, it'll be a long fight, but.
I got plenty of time.
Yeah. So we love long meetings.
Who is that commissioner of this, of our ward? Oh, I thought it was you, but I didn't want to assume.
The guy I never see every day.
Slightly anecdotal there, but with, my daughter takes the Springfield bus home, and it's changed. She used to stop on Elm, and the route changed. Now she's on Mermaid, and thankfully, the bus driver is, is very cognizant of this and makes sure that he's watching for cars. But there's been, as you can imagine, you've heard, seen videos, people passing the bus after it stopped, so she now gets off coming down, so I'm trying to figure out the direction, but she's on the opposite side of the street, so she has to cross to us there, so just something of consideration, and it's sort of off-topic there, but it kind of ties into what Kyle was saying about the, the speeding and the issue of what Mermaid has turned into, so. Certainly, let's talk.
I've had similar concerns with my kids in the bus. Unfortunately, those are run by the school district and not the boards of commissioners, so like, I, I've had my kids have a similar situation where they drive by our house like for three blocks and they, you know. So I, I understand your concern and safety should be the number one priority, but unfortunately, it's the school district that has jurisdiction over those buses.
Speed bumps would slow those traffic down, though.
Speed bumps would slow that.
Especially, I heard the term where people, people drive.
Yeah, yeah. Nobody's going to hear you.
Okay, 907 East Mermaid. Jen, I'm his wife. We will pull out of our driveway at 907 and cars just speed around us as we're going, so I think just, you know, one more case for we don't want something really bad to happen to anybody on the street or neighbors that are trying to cross the street safely, and I think that's just been something, we've been there how many years now? Eight, it'll be eight years, and it's unsafe. Every morning when we pull out, people will drive around us and they just speed around, so I don't know if there's a way. Are you saying get a lot, get our neighbors together? I mean, yeah, is that what it takes at petition to, for speed bumps?
And I, and I, you know, just since this is being tabled, I'm going to make this heart of bread. It's not hard for me. No, but when you, when you do take away these spots, it does create a, a big lane now to exacerbate that speeding issue, because people are going to now see this wide-open path to further kind of cut around, so. So, you know, sometimes parking on streets can be a, a speed mitigation factor, make it slow people down, because it's tighter and but all of a sudden you open up a big lane.
So to, to be clear, Commissioner Cobb, I didn't request.
No, no, I'm joking, I'm joking.
Yeah, we had a hit-and-run there two weeks ago on our street at night. So, yeah, the, the having the open lane is just going to, you know, make it easier for speeding and more dangerous, you know.
A car flipped in front of the pole in our house and then take out Mr. Kerper, David Kerper next to us, his retaining wall, and then your pole. I mean, there's been many speeding accidents. Many speeding accidents on the. Well, it's timely. I think we talked ad nauseam. Another thing that even on Monday, we talked about advocating for different different other, different interventions that may not be speed bumps, whether that's striping the lanes. All this is limited by PennDOT a little bit because this is a state rule.
Well, it's not a state rule, I'm sorry. But we're still subject to the state requirements for marking a public street because we get liquid fuels money to maintain streets.
So we've, we're trying to explore all the avenues and just, just want to know, since you probably haven't been here before, it sounds like that it's not, it's not taken for granted that this is an issue everywhere, and we understand. Which is appreciable, thank you.
I'll vote for anything if it gets me home by nine o'clock, but what's the poison?
Heard of Phil about the right now.
Yeah.
Since you're not a job. Thank you, Bert.
Right, thank you, thank you. Any other public comment? All right, great, thank you. Okay, we are done with the public comment, it seems, so we'll now go into the committee reports. I will begin as the chairman of the Public Safety Committee with one item this evening that we just talked about, which is the parking restrictions on 900 block of Mermaid Lane. It sounds like we have set some stuff we're going to deal with, so I move that we table that agenda item until next month.
Second.
All favors, in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed nay? Please record six zero. I don't know if you had a vote, but you did.
You covered your bases.
And that concludes my report. Commissioner Wilson is not with us this evening, nor does he have a report. So we will go to the chairman of the Administrative Fiscal Affairs and Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, regarding the bill listing, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the September check reconciliation in the amount of $950,858.53 in the October bill listing in the amount of $803,781.62. That's my motion.
Your motion is your second.
Second.
Questions or comments? Well, in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed nay? Please record a six zero.
Next, I'd like to announce the 2026 budget schedule. The budget workshop will be held on the 15th of October at seven o'clock in this room. Followed the following month, on November 12th, with the budget presentation at 7:30 with the final budget hearing to be held on December 10th at 7:30 to be immediately followed by the budget adoption that same night on the 10th of December. Each of those meetings will be held in the Springfield Township Building at 1510 Paper Mill Road. Next, Resolution Number 1675 regarding state pension aid. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1675, a resolution distributing the annual state allocation to the Springfield Township Municipal Pension Plans in compliance with the Pennsylvania Act 205 of 1984, the Municipal Pension Funding Standard and Recovery Act. The 2025 Commonwealth General Municipal Pension System state aid was deposited to the township's concentration account on September 24th, 2025, in the amount of $673,272.56 and will be distributed into the township's pension plans using formula provided by the township's pension actuary. And that is my motion.
Your motion is your second.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Now, Mike, when we discussed this on Monday, I thought that we had, we discussed not putting it into the pension plan incorrectly.
What you, you have to put in, you're going to reimburse yourselves for whatever you had already paid in.
Okay, okay.
Up to, up to whatever the, the number is. You have to make your MMO payment. You've got excess aid from the state that we had anticipated based upon budget projections, and you're going to basically reimburse yourself for whatever you are permitted to reimburse yourself.
Okay. Okay. Great.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed nay? Record a six zero.
And finally, regarding the zoning hearing board for the month of October, the Springfield Township Zoning Hearing Board will meet on Monday, October 27th, seven o'clock in this room, where they will hear one application from Petra and Michael Topper, owners of the property located 1812 East Abington Avenue in Windmore. The Toppers are seeking approval to construct a second-story addition over the rear of the home that will reduce the existing 10.75-foot side yard to seven feet, two inches. In addition, the building coverage on the property would increase from 37% to 38.8%, and the impervious coverage on the property would increase from 71% to 72% of the total lot. That proposed addition would add a third bedroom to the house, properties owned within the D Residential District of Ward 5 of Springfield Township. Copy of that application and information submitted for the application is on file in the Community Development Office and can be viewed during normal business hours. And again, that application will be heard at this month's zoning hearing board meeting on the 27th of October at seven o'clock. And that is my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. We'll now go to the chairwoman of the Parks and Recreational Resources Committee, Commissioner Retzabon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one motion before you tonight, an exciting one regarding your recreation center master plan. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the engagement of MKSD Architects of Allentown, Pennsylvania to conduct design, development, and construction document services for the Springfield Township Recreation Center project. The engagement shall be consistent with the MKSD proposal dated December 1, 2023, last revised February, last revised February 5, 2024, minus the civil engineering services which will be performed by the township engineer. The final terms of the engagement shall be reflected in an agreement that is to be in a form acceptable to the township solicitor. The fee for the approved scope of work shall not exceed $195,254.50. That is my motion.
Your motion is your second.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I wanted to clarify whether the adjacent playground space would be included in this plan. I believe it was, but just to be clear, I think we need to clarify that for for this. Now.
Yeah, well, we can confirm with the, the architect that that's included in the, in the next phase. I don't know that in you and Commissioner Lee have been part of the steering committee to this point. I don't know how much time has been spent on that portion of the project, so I don't.
How old is the playground next to it? How old, how old is it?
It's the next up according to Parks and Rec to be done.
That was funded by a community development block grant back in the early 2000s, shortly after we acquired the property.
I just wanted to clarify because I wasn't, you know, visually, it doesn't show on everything that we've seen recently, although in the very beginning, one of the main tenants of our, tenants of the RFP was symbiosis with the adjacent outdoor space, which presumably was the playground area. I can't say that we spent a lot of time on it, but part of it was because we need to define the building envelope, so. Regardless, I think the public would expect that that play area whatsoever it turns into would be included in this project. We certainly wouldn't want to spend $10 million not thinking about and leaving behind this, this patch of, this rectangle, you know, that as well. So I just want to clarify that that should be part of the conversation in design.
Can I recall, is that, is that where the playground is? Is that part of the portion?
No, that's.
So that is part of.
That's part of Laurel Beach Park.
So is the, is the property line where the? Okay, so is the is the property line where the the asphalt, like the parking ends?
No, so the part of the asphalt parking actually falls in the vacated portion of Pleasant Avenue.
Okay.
Which is now part of, which was as part of the grant that we got from Montgomery County, they asked that the board formally vacate the Pleasant Avenue Paper Street right away, uh, which was done.
Okay.
Um, but the parking lot, I'll call it, for what was then Seven Dollars Church encroached into that area, and nobody ever really made a fuss over it. It just kind of was there.
Yep.
Now, we happen to own both, so it's kind of blended together.
How far down the Pleasant Avenue, I mean, you have to, how far, how far Pleasant Avenue go for, did it end at the back of Seven Dollars at some point?
It 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 never extended through to Laurel. It always ended at where it wasn't, and it ended at um the end of Laurel.
Is that part of a name, Mike?
Laurel Beach.
No, no, like the, like the little kid area, Pleasant Land.
It's just a playground.
Uh, locally, people call it dinosaur park.
Special park, although I like Pleasant.
Pleasantland sounds like a good.
Pleasantland sounds nice.
Sounds like a good remark.
It's going to be a new John Cut.
Any only in context of the other part.
Changing the name to Uncomfortable Elephant.
Uncomfortable.
Well, anyways, I just just want to be sure that we're thinking about that space and that this was ever intended to be designed as a part of it. Want to be sure that's included. If it's not, I also want to be sure that we're thinking about including that space and in thinking about design and integration with the website. Certainly, again, wouldn't want to spend all this money on something brand spanking new to be adjacent to something that's four years.
Good, great.
That is my motion. We had a second. And those were.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay? Please record a six zero vote.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Retzabon. We'll now go to the chairman of the Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner May.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, for May, I'd just like to uh make the announcement about the recycling report. During the month of September twenty twenty-five, Springfield Township residents recycled forty-two tons of material with a household participation rate of seventy-two point nine percent. The net cost for the month was twenty-four thousand dollars, twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty cents. And that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner May. Now go to the chairwoman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner McNamara.
Thank you, Mr. President. One motion tonight. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution number sixteen seventy-six, a resolution authorizing a joint application with Upper Dublin Township to the twenty twenty-five PennDOT Transportation Alternatives Set Aside Program for the Pennsylvania Avenue multi multimodal improvements project. The proposed project includes revised pavement markings, new pedestrian ramps and crosswalk blocks, sidewalk installation, pedestrian signals, and the replacement of the bridge street traffic signal. The project is intended to provide traffic calming, pedestrian connectivity, and safety between the two townships. The estimated cost of the project is one point two six nine million with a local match in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand. The local match will be split between the two municipalities and is payable over two years. That is my motion.
Your motion is your second.
There.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, nay? Please record a six zero votes.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner McNamara. We'll now go to the chairman of the Cultural Resources Committee, Commissioner Morris.
Uh, Mr. President, I have no, nothing to report tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. Now, the committee reports are completed. The board is once again up and receiving public comment. No, anyone in person, so.
There are a lot of people on there.
Two people's.
Just that there are, there were people, just to consolidate the inquiries, if there were other people that were concerned about um speed bumps, they wanted to reach out, Commissioner Morris, too, just so they go into one consolidated place.
And just so you know, I did receive text messages um from concerned neighbors about the condition. Uh, and the comment was that, um, you know, the previous business had operated for years without moving a plant.
Great. Um, okay, I would accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All in favor? Wait, no, please, a second.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Please record a six zero vote. We are adjourned. Go Phils.